Call the meeting to order. First thing would be to adopt our agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as posted.
I'll second that.
What would happen if nobody made that motion?
We're just here staring at each other.
Yeah, we would adjourn.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the agenda as written. Any changes? None heard at all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Close no one. Select Board member remarks, just the same remarks I always like to make, which is to let's be respectful and treat everyone with respect. We do have a very deep select board packet tonight. Yet, having gone through all 50 plus pages of it, I don't think it's going to take us too, too, too long. So bear with us.
I know, right?
It was a lot of reading this weekend. Okay, so with that said, any others like would want to say anything to start the meeting? So item three. Minutes warrant liquor. Possible consent?
I will move that we move items three, A, B, and C to a consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion for three, A, B, and C as a consent. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. For the public, that is minutes warrant. And a couple of liquor licenses that the town clerk has already issued that we need to bless. So with that said, all in favor of three, A, B, and C? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close no one. Select Board reports, Town Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the community. I did submit a report in advance, which was pretty extensive and included a project tracker update, so I won't belabor it. It did have, again, last year's budget status appears to have a surplus in the order of $144,000 right now. This year's operating budget appears to be, the expenses so far after one month, appear to be within on pace figures, except for the admin budget, and I noted the items there that are usually annual in the admin, like VLCT dues, Nemrick service subscription, tuition, the external auditors, and then our bookkeeper keeps an eye on postage rates and to gain best advantage for the town, she did purchase a lot of postage and envelopes before the July 13 rate increase. But I do have some updates and highlights if I could. I just distributed those on the table tonight. For the community, there are volunteer board seats open still on the Development Review Board as an alternate, the Planning Commission as an alternate, and the Energy Committee as a voting member. You can let me know if you'd like the select board to consider you for any of those. For your awareness, the trustees of public funds will meet tomorrow at 7:00 PM in this room. And the Brandon workbook, working group of the Historic Preservation Commission will meet tomorrow at 6:30 PM at the town office on the second floor in the conference space. This is a change of venue because they were both planned to be here. For updates in public works, we're sorry to have a resignation from Cara Boudreaux in our wastewater treatment department. She has accepted another job offer in a field that she was formerly part of, and she wants to go back to that. We're sorry to see her go, and we will repost the position. The town crew did a great job up at the Seminary Hill Park and playground. They constructed some head-in parking spots near the basketball court. The idea up there is to allow people to park head in so that they can back out safely and then come back down the hill if that's their intent without having to drive up on the sidewalk, or in some cases, we have people who were parked parallel and they've been driving into the front yards of the neighbors there on West Seminary Street, and we really want to encourage people to try to be respectful and courteous of the neighbors to the dog park by not doing that. So the head-in parking should help. If you are parked parallel, the chief, police chief advises that a safe three-point turn would prevent you getting up on the sidewalk, too. I have on the select board table tonight some historical artifacts. These are the hands and numbers of the south face of the town clock. So the steeplejacks have been up there working, and the town owns the clock, but not the steeple. The Congregational Church has been having the steeple repair work done at their expense. We are responsible for the clock part, and the steeplejack brought this down and had me and Bill come over and check it out, and you'll see it's gold leaf, but it was applied to plywood, which is now in a pretty moderate state of deterioration because of weather. So.
Is it actually gold leaf or metallic gold paint?
He said gold leaf. That's what he said. So the reason I'm bringing it to the select board is because we had budgeted to have the hands and numbers re-leafed as part of the steeplejack's work, but now it seems like it would be a good idea for us to have the hands and numbers replaced. So the steeplejack is going to present us with some options, and I don't know what those are going to look like. I know that he is suggesting that it would be more normal for these pieces to be made of metal than to be made of wood. Dan Snow, by the way, advised that he will wait for the steeple work to be completed, and then he will work some more on the clockworks itself inside. In the Public Safety Mission, Chief Kachajin has done a great job finding a firearms dealer who will consider taking our current service weapons in trade as we look to replace them. That would be the smoothest and most cost-efficient transaction for the town if we could take the weapons that we want to divest of and give them in trade, sell them in trade when we buy the new service weapons. There's some details in my report about why we are doing this.
These are the Sig Sowers that are potentially defective?
I don't, I don't know if I would use the word defective because I feel like it's provocative, but I would say there's a safety concern, like that's a definite fact. There is a safety concern that's been expressed by number departments, and the chief tells me he's done some networking among police agencies in Vermont, and all except one that he contacted are divesting of the Sig Sauer P320 and getting into something else. This was entirely in my report, but I do want to read it out because it's so important. The town received its quarterly local option tax revenue in the amount of $88,361. This is the highest quarter we've ever had for any quarter of any year, and, yes, very good. And the 1% tax has now generated more than $2 million for select board-directed capital investment in the town of Brandon. This is an ongoing capital revenue stream. It represents really meaningful property tax relief. As you know, the whole town budget is around $3 million, and at some point, we're going to have made a whole town budget's worth of capital funding out of the 1% money. The tax sale update is that the letters from the attorney, they've already gone out to the property owners, and they're now being prepared to go out to the lien holders. Lien holders would be banks and mortgage companies that may clear the tax arrears to remove the property from tax sale. And lastly, under community development, there was some conversation about itinerant vendors in Brandon in the last week or so. The town does have an itinerant vendor ordinance. It allows for door-to-door sales. We did have a college student recently come into the town office, inquire about it in advance of doing anything in Brandon. He met the requirements. He provided his insurance. He paid the fee. He had all the stuff he needs to do, and so I issued him a permit to sell educational books door-to-door. My understanding of the statute is that the town can regulate, meaning set conditions on door-to-door sales, but we cannot prohibit them, and I realize this is no longer common, and it was a little bit unexpected for some folks, but this is lawful commerce in Vermont.
And I would, I would just note to add to that, that putting up no solicitation signs on your home sometimes will deter door-to-door salesmen, but they do not have force of law. So if a door-to-door salesman ignores the solicitation, no solicitation sign and knocks on your door, please don't call the police. Just tell them to go away.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hopkins. Questions for Mr. Hopkins from the select board? I'll make a comment on these, Seth. If this is gold leafing.
That's what they say.
If you want to try looking at the condition of these, my wife in cleaning out her mother's art studio has found four containers of gold leafing. And this stuff is very expensive, and she has no idea what she's going to do with it. She has never applied it and would be, I'm sure, more than willing to make an attempt if you want to rework any of these pieces.
So I'm delighted that she's happy to go up on the very tall ladder with the steeplejack.
And I would pay to see it.
Well, that's, that's very generous. Thank you. Yeah, I can mention that to the steeplejack and see if maybe, maybe if we have the gold leaf and now we need the pieces, maybe the costs will be balanced out or something.
It may, it may be, and as I say, she is just telling me just this weekend that there's a fourth container full of gold leafing that she has found, and she has no clue because it's a lost art that nobody is doing anymore. So it could be an attempt.
Thank you.
Other than that, I would like to congratulate the town on the amount of local option stacks. Two million is fantastic. We're in good shape, and thank you for the project tracker. Anything else from the board? Anything else for the town manager regarding his report from the public? None heard. Next on the agenda is Mr. Moore.
Thank you. That's my report for today, the 11th of August. It's a long one. Thanks to the hard work of some 24 youth works volunteers from Decora Iowa, our own Highway Parks Department staff, Kyle Ledem and the Highway Division Chief Jeremy Disorta, the wastewater department, Tim Kingston, Ian Buckley, and Brandon Fire District Number One Assistant Operator Brad Danforth, the donation-supported water fountains have been installed or are in operation at Seminary Hill Park. While there, the work was performed on parking areas becoming more defined in length and using recycled mill asphalt. Speaking of youth works, other projects completed during their three weeks included cleanup of garages at the wastewater treatment plant, clean-out and painting of two sheds, and painting of the women's bathroom at Esterbrook, painting of five town-owned picnic tables, a limited application of weed control for the brick walkways, removal of decorative flags on the telephone poles, painting over graffiti and spreading of wood chips at Seminary Hill, the cleaning out and painting over of graffiti on the Sanderson Bridge, the gluing on of floor protectors on the upstairs chairs at the town hall, the painting of the display board at the town hall, the rolling of leftover t-shirts for t-shirt cannon use, the sorting of football equipment. These groups that hailed from the states of the aforementioned Iowa, Pennsylvania, and Maine, providing an invaluable service to our town. They all enjoyed the work and getting to know Brandon. They got it creamy at Sweet Sappies. It was fantastic. The lights at the Otter Valley North Campus space have been replaced thanks to the organization of pickleball commissioner Bernie Carr. This will allow for the resumption of table tennis and filling out the 22 hours of pickleball being programmed in that space per week. Thanks to new Brandon resident and now freshly anointed commissioner Alana Sadlin, floor hockey is coming back to the 05733. This is an 18-plus offering that's set to begin on September 7, and will run 3:30 to 5:00 PM on Sundays at the Nashaby School Gymnasium. This is pickup style. The rec will provide sticks, pennies, and goals. The adult floor hockey commissioner, Alana Sadlin, again, I repeated that. Registration will be free and is available at brandonrec.com. Our ever-popular archery with Melinda Hart is set to resume on September 17. The venue has changed to the rec field at the Nashaby School, the fenced infield, and that is my written report for today.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Questions for Mr. Moore from the board? Questions for Mr. Moore from the public? Very.
I just want to take a minute to commend the management team for a lot of shepherding that they do on some of these small projects. We talk a lot about continuous improvement, and continuous improvement isn't always big swing projects. And when, when you speak about Seminary Hill, for example, we got trees planted, we have parking area installed, we have water fountains installed, we even took effort to make sure the trees get watered with our crew so they don't die. I mean, these are all the things that incrementally improve quality of life. So thank you.
Well, we're fortunate to live, we're fortunate to live in a town we have, you know, the tree, tree warden. I mean, like, again, it really does take a village, you know, to make a community run. And again, like, I don't think this is possible in a lot of other places that aren't Brandon.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Moore? None heard. Moving on. Item five is a Green Fleet presentation from Tim Giles. Please step forward.
Hello, Select Board. This is Tim Giles, so your AI to get the right name. It's a pleasure to see you from this side of the table. I've been looking forward to sharing this information with you. This Green Fleet is a wonderful example of a factual tool which can be used for decision-making, which is really why I originally promoted it, and we unanimously adopted it a number of years ago. I do my best to avoid hyperbole and exaggeration whenever talking about anything, but specifically about the environment. But I will remind you that, you know, a warming atmosphere creates more intense storms, and, and the state of Vermont wonderfully has come up with these goals to, to do our part, to try to be responsible about helping to be part of the solution. And so that's really part of what this Green Fleet is all about. I wanted to start off this little talk, and it won't be lengthy, because I never like when people read what they've already given you, and so I'm going to try to mostly avoid that. But I do want to thank Jackie and Elaine up in the town office for supplying data in a wonderful, timely fashion, and I would remind any of you that don't know, and certainly any public that are watching, that it's, it's wonderfully available data. It takes Elaine about 20 seconds to bot me the data each month when she gets it, because it's in a spreadsheet form, and she can just go, you know, Tim needs to have this, and the same with Jackie's stuff. It's really relatively transparent to their work, which is important. The other thing I would say is that it's, it's, it's relevant that in my lifetime, in the early days when I did environmental promotion of doing the right thing, it was non-economic. And, you know, the things that needed to be done cost money, and people had to want to spend that money because they weren't doing it to save money. They were doing it for environmental reasons. And the great time in which we live now is that so many, almost all the environmental things that we need to be doing are economic, which means that they'll help save the town money, and I think that's a wonderful element of the Green Fleet, which won't always be true. And I think that's a piece that I want to try to just play through here, is that there's some heavy lifting ahead of us, and that's what I'm going to kind of end at when I get to the end. So let's just briefly start at the, at the beginning and, and remind ourselves that the three goals that the state of Vermont came up with was a 26% reduction in 2025, a 40% reduction in 2030, and an 80% reduction by 2050, and we're talking about carbon footprint. And today's 2025, so it's one of the first times we have a chance to see whether we're, we're hitting the mark. And sure enough, partly by pure luck, but I would argue partly by wise choices we've been making, we have pretty close to met our 2025 mark. We were supposed to have 244 units of, of carbon footprint, according to the data, and we actually have 249, which is, I call a win. Now, the reason why we were able to do that has to do with these four fuel usages that we use. There were four contributors to our carbon footprint: propane, gas for like lawn mowers and for cars, heating oil, which tends to be a larger carbon contributor, and then diesel. And unsurprisingly, our, our gas footprint went down a lot because our police department declined a lot. But the interesting part about that is, that also shows us that if we move towards electric police cars, we could sustain the savings. And I would urge you to, to continue to think of electric alternatives for police cars as you go forward. There's a number of good alternatives, not the least of which is the new Buzz that the town just got. It's an electric vehicle that has very wide seats. I mean, I understand that the most recent, one of the reasons for not going electric with your newest purchase for the police department was the width of the seat, and both the Buzz and Jeff's truck have very wide seats and could take tool belts comfortably. And so I hope you'll consider that in the future. And a big success story is the town hall. They got rid of their heating oil furnace and went to propane, and propane is, is cleaner than heating oil, and, and so that's a big step in the right direction. We can achieve more savings by continuing to lean into our, our heat pump usage. Two of the areas that are going to allow us to hit our 2030 goal is going to be the, the potential of having a new highway garage, because currently our highway garage is a sieve, and the heat you pour into it pretty much pours out, the cracks around the doors and the way, and even though they've done a good job of tightening it up as much as they can, and to their credit, they have been very supportive of allowing the heat to be adjusted in a way that doesn't keep the, the garages overheated in the winter when they don't need to be. Understandably, they need to have it warming up to melt their trucks during snow events, but that's not all the time, and, and Jeremy has been very supportive of allowing the heat to be turned back when they don't need it to be turned up. But clearly, a new garage would save a ton of energy for the town. And I, I think the largest potential, and, and what I really touched on in my conclusion, was that there are electric alternatives to dump trucks and to graders and to bucket loaders and to all of the heavy equipment that currently use diesel. Currently, they're in Europe right now, but they exist, and they will be coming here, and they will, there will be options going forward. And what I'm hoping is that the sense of this Green Fleet data and our place in Vermont doing our part will build strength amongst you to make the hard decisions to, to get some of that new equipment that will be all-electric in the future and reduce our diesel load, because that's clearly the motherload of where our, our energy, our carbon footprint comes right now.
I have a quick question. Do you have to know whether, I mean, I know you've been doing this research, and do you happen to know whether Daimler trucks, which is, has a huge base in the States, is making any electric vehicles?
I would love to look into that and get back to you. I don't know off the top of my head, but I do know that all of these large equipment manufacturers are, are creating electric alternatives, because there's a demand in the market for it. They're, they're less expensive to run, less expensive to maintain, and the reality is, electric can do anything diesel can. It, 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 basically, it's hydraulics. You're running on these big equipment, and you can run hydraulics with electric.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because they do tend to be in the forefront of a lot of these things, and so.
I'll look that up. I'll look that up and get back to you. So, you know, the last thing I'll say, and then I'll certainly entertain any more questions you have, I don't want to trip your time, is that when I got to the conclusion page, I, I mentioned that our 26% reduction target was 244, and we made 249. And I mentioned that we have a 40% reduction for 2030, and just so you know that number, it's 198, and that's what we're going to kind of be aiming for. And in these coming years, when I come back each year to visit you, I'll be trying to help bend the curve in that direction. I started with a number of 330, which was a relatively arbitrary number to estimate what a 1990 energy level might have been in our town, because I didn't have that data. And that's one that if people wanted to debate, we could look at, but in many ways, the starting point isn't that important, because when you talk about getting down to a 40% of the starting amount, kind of whatever it might you start at, it's, it's going to be.
Significant.
Significant. And so I think it was a conservative number I chose to start off this study with. So are there any questions?
Your report calls it out, but I just wanted to mention it. I know one of the potential kind of low-hanging fruit things is just better insulation in all the town buildings, but certainly the wastewater facility, and I think, I want to say the Energy Committee had sort of poked a stick at that a couple of years ago, but it didn't end up going anywhere.
Well, we had a grant that we were supposed to get that should have come our way, that would have significantly improved the, the wastewater plant, and, and that's something that it would be wonderful to think of a 1% money, because it's infrastructure, right? And it would make a significant improvement, because there's a number of places there that are not well insulated.
And I know we're still talking about a new town garage, and we did the site visits to kind of figure out what we could and couldn't do, and where we could and couldn't do it. So that's definitely high on our list of things, too.
Yeah.
Good question. Do you, we have a lot of trucks that go through Brandon every day that burn natural gas, I believe. Does they have big difference in emissions between natural gas and diesel?
You know, that's another one I will look up for you, because I can't tell you off the top of my head, and, and I do think they're cleaner. I, I think that similarly, there was some talk when I was in the board about trying to go to biodiesel, which is also a slightly cleaner lifetime fuel, which had problems in procurement. But these are the kinds of things that we're supposed to look at through the Green Fleet is possible alternatives that will move us in a good direction, and that's one.
I was up in the Kingdom yesterday, and we passed Black Bear Biodiesel. I guess they are a manufacturer of biodiesel. I, I couldn't tell if they were still open or not.
There, there were only two biodiesel dealers we could find in Vermont, and it was Black Bear and Warren's, I think, in the Berry, Montpelier area.
I don't know if it's the same. I know when biodiesel was first getting started, there are a lot of folks in Portland that were burning it in their cars. It smells like french fries.
Yes, yeah. When you follow them down the road, it's like.
You're like.
Smells like McDonald's. Well, thank you for your, your time and attention, and I look forward to bringing you into another report next year.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you for the support.
Yeah, and I appreciate your willingness to do this, because when you left the select board, my first question was, who's going to do the Green Fleet report?
Happy to help.
And I would just add for the public, it's worth reading the whole report. Tim did a really good job packaging it all in a way that's very easy to understand, and it's just got some very cool information and things to think about.
And graphs.
And graphs.
Very nice, helpful.
Thank you very much, Tim. Yeah, I'll do that. All right. Moving on to item six, North Street Bridge Replacement Design Options. I believe you're going to chat with us on that?
Sure. So this is a, a design-only project that has already gone through three town managers, right? These things take a while, and so what they've got is, I think there was 170-page report, which we've put on the town, town website, so if anybody wants to see all the details there. We pulled out the first 16 or so pages, and they, they talk about the site, and at the end, they talk about the three different kinds of structures that they would recommend and what their recommendation is. So the first one is a 31-foot span bridge, kind of of traditional construction. The second is a 36-foot con span, which means it's kind of like a cross between a bridge and a culvert. It's not sitting on abutments in the same way. It's all together. And the third alternative is an aluminum box culvert. I would say it's most similar in Brandon to like the Cobb Hill culvert that was put in after Tropical Storm Irene. Their analysis talks about cost. It takes into consideration what kind of flood it can handle. It takes into consideration how disruptive the construction process will be and how the traffic's going to have to get taken care of, and it's overall, and it's modern, sorry, its environmental impacts. And the engineers who have worked through these three designs are recommending that the aluminum box culvert would be the most cost-efficient, and overall, it gets their highest rating because it has the lowest cost and a similar performance in flood events. So this is for consideration of the select board. At this time, we don't believe there are any programs open to apply for construction grants, because obviously, the, the costs for the benefit of the public, the costs range from 1.8 million for the first one, 1.7 million for the second one, and 1.1, let's say, 5 million for the third one. So obviously, the town's not going to lay out a million and a half dollars for the North Street Bridge. This is the bridge near the Forestdale Post Office over the Nashaby River. So we will continue to. So we will continue to monitor and solicit grant opportunities for what they call implementation in the V-Trans world, which is construction.
So at this point, we don't need to make any decisions. We just accept the report and
I think that would be a good thing to do. I know we can't apply for any of the implementation or construction money until this study was done. And I would say that it would be fair to accept the report and then go for some construction money. And when that comes, then you can make a determination. I mean, they're trying to lay it out in a way that it's, they're, they're tipping the scale in the direction that they think will be the best public dollar benefit.
Right. And just for what it's worth, I, I had no idea what any of these things were and I had to start looking things up. The, the second option, the con span option is probably aesthetically the most pleasing. But, uh, and it has hydraulic, good hydrology, but in terms of cost effectiveness, I think the third option is but it also kind of depends on how much money we can get and from whom, right?
At this point, you don't even want us to say if you prefer option one, two, or three?
I don't think it's necessary. I, I, I would maybe encourage a vote to accept the report from the engineer with the alternates.
Somebody like to make that motion?
I move that we accept the alternatives analysis and assessment for the North Seat Bridge that was prepared for the town by, I would pronounce it Dubois and King. I don't know how they actually pronounce it. Dubois. Dubois. And, uh, accept it so that at a time that it becomes possible to obtain funding for the new bridge, we will have this analysis and the alternatives in hand.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I would just like this date so that the public knows that if they get funding in there for bridges in the state, it would be an 80/20. So it's worth us to wait on building a bridge till we can get 80% of the money back. Okay. So we have a motion to accept the report. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Ours, no one? We have accepted the report. Okay. Item seven. Uh, fixed or set fixed terms for the Historic Preservation Commission. Again, I think you were approached by them, Seth.
Right. The Historic Preservation Commissioners asked for the select board to appoint them not to indefinite terms, but to fixed terms. So I think that they are the only board that had been appointed to indefinite terms other than the revolving fund committee.
Energy Committee is indefinite as well.
Energy Committee. Okay. So there's a couple. Most of our, most of our boards work on fixed terms. So, um, one of the commissioners, Shirley Markland, requested a consideration for a one-year term. The current commissioners are Shirley Markland, Dennis Risenweaver, who's the chair, Frank Bump, John Peterson, and Vicky Disorda. My suggestion to the select board would be to consider mirroring the select board terms, meaning three three-year seats for continuity and two one-year seats for short time commitments. So if that were the case in the first year, it might behoove you to appoint a one-year seat, a second one-year seat, a one-year remaining of a three-year seat, a two-year remaining of a three-year seat, and a three-year remaining of a three-year seat.
Um, and it's my understanding that no one had responded other than Ms. Markland, but Ms. Disorda is present. So I think it would be fair to give her the opportunity to respond if she has a preference of, if she's, uh, is going to remain on the board, uh, which of these seats? Cause otherwise we're just going to be like assigning them. Well, this is the way that we have been treating the other boards, uh, at the last couple of meetings. It's not brought up that maybe we shouldn't, and that was something we'd been looking into, but we haven't made any decisions on that. So what I would say is they will be treated the same as all the other boards are treated. If we make a change to how that happens, that will happen to everyone. Correct.
So it's no preference?
She said did no preference.
No preference. Are you sure the board?
I guess I'm not terribly comfortable. Vicky, can you say who else on the commission is just Dennis and you? Got it.
Well, I can be the one to go out on a limb here and say that Shirley Markland has requested a one-year seat. So if we plug her into the one-year seat, one attendee doesn't go to very many of the meetings. So we could have put him in the B slot, which is the other one-year seat.
It's Mr. Bump.
That would be Mr. Bump. Uh, and then, um, John Pearson has been the, pretty much the longest tenured person, and I think that we should try to keep his knowledge on board for long. And Dennis is the, uh, chair. And Vicky has, if we put you on for one year, would you run again for the three-year? Come back around?
To re-up if, depending on how we
Or, or have us rename you again for three-year? Correct.
Correct. If, if, I know it's confusing because we had talked about whether that was a policy that we needed to, to address as to how we did it. But what I will say is if we keep that same policy going forward, which is where we ask people who have been on the board, if they plan to remain on the board, that's what we would do. So you, the two years remaining of a three-year seat, is that what you are expecting?
I was going to just amend this to be Dennis Risenweaver to the one-year remaining of a three-year seat. And Vicky to two years remaining of a three-year seat. I would like to make that as a motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
So did we have a, already have a motion on the
We did not.
Okay. So then the, the motion is, uh, Shirley Markland and one, Frank Bump for one. Dennis Risenweaver for one year remaining of a three-year seat. Vicky Disorder for two years remaining of a three-year seat. And John Peterson, three years of a three-year seat.
Uh, I didn't realize it would be bumping Dennis down to a one-year. I don't want to do that to Dennis. He put me in for one of
So you want to swap those two around for now? Okay. I amend my motion to that, which would be putting Vicky in the, the C slot as to where we have it on the agenda and Dennis in the, the, uh, D slot. Somebody need to second that?
Second.
So now we have to vote on that as an amendment to the original. So all in favor of amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
And now we can vote it as, as, uh, the real, the real deal. So all in favor of that as the final result, please say aye.
Aye.
And as with any of the commission, I, you know, I applaud everyone who's willing to serve on them and I encourage, uh, oh, continuity is great. And so to the extent that people want to keep on serving, um, that's great.
There's one other part of this that you would like them to, um, to be the ones that we appointed in, in, at the end of the fiscal year?
I, I, I don't have a strong preference if the board has a strong preference. But there are two spots in the year when terms expire. One is that town meeting day. And that tends to be like fence viewers and wares of coal and stuff like that. Most of the boards and commissions expire June 30th, which is the end of the fiscal year.
I would move that we have the terms expiring on June 30th, like most of the others. I mean, that's the planning commission and the energy commission and the development review board. So it makes sense to have them all at that time.
Not noting.
Not noting.
Were you second what you're saying?
Yes.
Favor of having this go to June 30th each year? Say aye.
Aye.
So that gives you what you need to notify people. Thank you very much. Thank you for all those people. And if anyone leaves, we always fill a position and we are still looking at the idea of, uh, changing how some of that is done. So, moving on. Uh, restructuring the Advisory Budget Committee to comply with state law.
Okay. This is me. So and, and, um, so I, I don't know if people have looked at the packet on the select board. There's a, a long memo with some supporting documents in there. And this, this came about, um, not so much as part of my review of the ordinances, but partly because I had the book of policies with me. And at the last couple of meetings when we were talking about how boards and commissions got appointed and, uh, Jen Coolidge had brought up the point that we've been kind of back and forth about how we treated the budget committee. And so I decided I would do a little research and to see what other towns are doing and what the state is doing. And what I discovered is that for the last 11 years, we've kind of been not complying with state law. So in 2013, the legislature started discussing, um, the issue that there were towns in Vermont that had committees that didn't seem to spring from any statutory authorization. The Vermont League of Cities and Town had done a bit of a, uh, poll and some towns had gotten back to them about committees they had. And what sprang out of that, uh, among those committees that some towns had that didn't seem to have statutory authorization were budget advisory committees or advisory budget committees as the, um, legislature called them. And so what they did is they enact, they amended 17 Vermont statutes annotated section 2646, which governs the election of town officers. And in that statute, it states that at the annual meeting, the town shall choose among its legally qualified voters, the following town officers who shall serve until the next annual meeting, until successors are chosen unless otherwise provided by law. And then the statute lists several different kinds of town officers. And for each one, it's like, for example, um, town constable. If the town so votes, they will then elect these town officers. And so they added a new section to that subsection 18 that provides five members of an advisory budget committee if the town so votes. And then it says that the advisory budget committee shall be elected by ballot unless the town votes to have those members appointed by the select board. So we have not been electing town budget committee. It's been by appointment and it's kind of over the years ebbed and flowed. We'd have different ways of doing it and we've had different ways of working with it. So what we now need to do, and we talked with, um, Doug and I talked with Sue Gage, who is the town clerk and is in charge of town elections about this. And whether or not the town will have a budget advisory committee is something that would be presented at town meeting for a floor vote. And then whether or not the may budget committees, uh, members would be elected or appointed would also be the subject of a floor vote. So what that means is at the next town meeting in March, 2026, the night of town meeting, we would have floor vote as to whether to have a budget advisory committee and whether they shall be elected or appointed. What that means is that if the night of the floor vote, it is determined that the budget advisory committee members will be elected the next day, we will need to have candidates on the ballot. So now is the time for people who are interested in being on the budget advisory committee, if the town votes for them to be elected, to do what it needs, to think about whether they want to be on the ballot, to be elected to a budget advisory committee and do what it takes to get on the ballot, which is the same for like the select board or other town offices. You need to get a petition with a certain number of signatures on it. So that covers
Might jump in?
Yeah.
So she's a lawyer and she's got all the lawyer speak and I'm just a dumb retired banker. So, um, the way I see it, after all of our going through the laws and going through things, that the town of Brandon in 1939 did vote to have a budget advisory committee. And so that's kind of a prelude to what we've been kind of doing, even though it's been done different ways. In 2013, the law changed saying that you needed to elect these people. Um, unless you went to your voters and asked them to be appointed. So the way that we can easily get back into compliance with the law, which we would like to do, is to, A, for this year, not technically have a budget committee because we have handled this as an open meeting anyway, with everyone coming and we would, I would invite everyone do it, to do it exactly the same that as we did it last year, that we would come, we would talk, we would all have input and we would come out with a budget. There just would not be a definite assigned name that you're a budget advisory committee person. To do the, and then, and then to then make it legal that at town meeting, because on a floor vote, question one would say, do we want to have a budget advisory committee? Yes or no? Simple question. If they say no, we're done. If from the floor, the answer is yes, then you go to question two, which is, do we want the select board to appoint the budget committee? Yes or no? The answer is yes, then we're back to what we did last year and have been doing as many years as I've been involved. They're probably all the way back to 1939. And if they say no to that, then we would already tell the public and the people that they should get their petitions in if they want to be on the advisory committee in case there's a, a answer that says, we don't want the select board to do this. We want the voters to do this. So you have a petition in, your name's on the ballot. You win the election, you lose the election, who knows what? Everybody's there and we're, we're set to roll with that. If five people do not file a petition and only four do, then it's considered an open position, in which case the select board would then appoint that one additional spot also. It's a way that gets us back into legal compliance with Vermont state law that we have never been advised of in any manner. And it did come out of your digging through all of the different stuff, you know, that we're doing. And, um, I, I think it's the cleanest way to do it this year personally.
So, um, this won't be new. Um, I, I've put this forward before, but it's appropriate to put it forward again now from this side of the podium. If you're going to have a budget committee, it seems like you have to, especially if it's going to be elected and it's going to be in statute where it's going to exist. You have to really define what those responsibilities are.
And I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the, the legislature has done that.
Well, good, because I think that's going to be critical for the voters to understand when they're electing. But the part that I fail to understand is how anything that approaches a budget committee is any different than someone who just chooses to come to the meetings and participate? Cause it seems like that's still going to happen. You aren't going to make like a, a sequestered room where it's just the select board and the budget committee meeting, uh, members. It's, it's always going to be open to the public.
Correct.
And so I, 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 I fail to understand the need to label a committee. I didn't understand why I was in the board and I don't understand I didn't understand why I was in the board and I don't understand it now because we so strongly encourage everybody to come and to participate and to make their suggestions and to be part of the conversation. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and I will note that at the same time that they passed the amendment saying about electing one, they enacted a new statute that says if a municipality creates an advisory budget committee as provided in 17 BSA 2646, the committee shall evaluate the municipality's budget and make recommendations to the select board for the budget based on its findings. And so we've had Seth and Doug and I have had some discussion about that text and, and what it means. And I, I think, and this is kind of the thoughts that were coming, thoughts of coming, is one thing is that the committee would take last year's budget and look at it. And from that derive recommendations for the coming budget. Another way to look at it is the select board develops the budget all on its lonesome with public participation and then presents that to the advisory committee, which then makes its recommendations.
Right.
I, I kind of like the first interpretation, which is they, this committee of five would take last year's budget and come up with recommendations that they would bring to the board. But I also agree that having a committee does not preclude the board from taking information from people who come and participate.
And, and to make my point clearly, you know, I could get together with a couple of neighbors and analyze the budget, make suggestions and come to the board and say, here's my suggestions. No, I could completely replicate the action of, of a budget committee and it would have the same authority. And that's my point. Thank you.
Barry, I see your hand too.
Just the thought. We absolutely should do whatever is necessary to get compliant. But it sounds like it could be confusing when it comes together in March.
Yep.
Would we consider doing it in two steps? Where this year we vote on, do we want to have a committee and how do we pick them? If it's decided that they are elected, then next year.
Wait a year.
Otherwise you've got some scenarios that could crop up that would be a, a little dicey. If a town meeting night, the town decides, um, they want, they want the board to, to select the members. The next day, people on the ballot get elected. So you're going to have a little bit of a disjoint there over choices or preferences. Another scenario could happen where, um, people get elected to a position that doesn't exist. Like if, if the town decides not to have a board, the next day people get elected into a position that doesn't exist.
Right.
Yep.
And I'm not recommending two years. I'm just saying to avoid a lot of possible conflicts or on discontent, it might be advisable to think about doing it in two steps.
And I, I agree. That was, I mean, we talked about the confusion and this is one of the things we talked about with Sue was like, well, how do we deal with that? And, um, obviously if at town meeting, the vote is to have a committee, but to have it appointed, but these names are on the ballot and people vote for them. Those votes get disregarded, but they could also be useful to the board in knowing who's interested in being on the committee and how much support they have.
No, I, I get how it would work.
But also if we, if we do it in the two-step thing, that would mean at least this year and next year, we would be going with the, um, uh, formulation of no advisory committee, but people are welcome to come to the budget planning sessions and say their piece or, you know, make recommendations. I personally, that would.
Yeah.
I guess I don't have a dog in that fight.
All I'm trying to anticipate is if, if people are elected and it's decided that they should be selected and the people that were elected don't get selected, then the voters might feel as though they've.
Yeah.
I agree.
This is Bill. Oh, so the, the, uh, I mean, in effect, if you guys did decide to go the very way and do it in two steps, at the point if, if the vote or say, yes, uh, we wanted elected positions, you guys are still being in the position of filling unfilled seats at that point after it's. Because the voters have elected to say, we want five positions. No?
I, I think that, cause they wouldn't be, it's, it's, they become vacant after someone leaves it. And, and so our, our policy for filling seats are when a seat becomes vacant. I think that creating the budget committee and saying that they shall be elected prevents the select board from appointing a five-member committee. I think it's slightly different when, when Doug was talking about how if we elect to have a five-member committee who are elected, but there are only four candidates, then we have a committee with elected officials, but there is a vacant seat, then the board might be able to fill that seat. I so, but we can't just fill the whole commission.
Patricia and while Pat's walking up, I, you know, I would say, you know, it's all dicey. We've spent a number of hours on this today trying to figure out how to basically be able to discuss this in a format that was understandable. Um, and I think that in my tenure as board chair, I've tried to let, encourage public communication all the time anyway. So the only difference I see is the budget committee last year, we lined up the tables and the five people on the budget committee actually sat with us, but they didn't have voting rights, so to speak, because that's a select voice position, but it's trying to find that happy ground. Go ahead.
I'm just a little confused about the process then because if you have to take out a petition and get so many signatures and then have your name printed on the ballot, that means you have to like go out and sort of campaign to be on that committee. But if the night before it's voted that either there's not going to be a committee at all, or it's going to be appointed, then you've kind of done all this hoo-ha in, in the community to go out and campaign all this when it's really a moot point and the ballots are really not valid ballots anymore. And the other point is when you said, well, if there's a budget committee, they would get last year's budget and go through it and then make recommendations. Are you saying they would do that separately and then just come back with recommendations? Or it'd be the way that we've been doing it where we're, it's we all do it together, page by page.
Right. What I was saying was that is a way of reading the statute, that, that the state law that dictates the duties of the budget committee, which are to take the budget and report its analysis and findings to the select board.
And I would just say, I would find that very hard because we would not be able to have all the people come in and give us all the information about how things may have changed or not changed or explain this line item. I think the process that we've used has been a really good one because it is open to everybody and anybody can make comments, but so it's a little bit structured in the sense that there are certain people that are just committed to be there to get all the information all the time. They're just periodically or after the fact.
That was the plus of the budget committee was those people, those five people committed to come to every budget meeting, which last year was substantial number of meetings where people can come to one meeting and not show up. You know, because they don't have to for X number of meetings and then come in and we can't always back up all the way back to what somebody wanted to talk about. We're going, you know, forward with things. So, we, we have to work our way through it. And okay, I see, um, Brent as a hand and then I see here and there. I see a couple more.
Could I, could I offer just a little response to Tricia's question? So her first question was very good about what if the floor vote says no, but there's already a list of candidates? So, uh, Sue had given us an example from actual life in Brandon where that happened, where we used to elect the constables, a first and second constable. And the constables were on the ballot, but the night before the town meeting voted to do away with elected constables. So those two positions were still on the ballot. They had gotten their petitions or whatever, but that race was just not counted. It was like, basically it was a provisional ballot pending the outcome of the town meeting floor vote the night before.
Right. And I, and I, I understand your concern about maybe people will feel like they've wasted their time going through the process of getting the signatures and doing whatever campaigning. But if at the floor vote, they did say, we want to elect them, then we would have that slate of candidates ready. You know, unless we take the step that, that Barry has suggested about doing the floor votes this March and waiting a year before we have the election for the actual members of the board. You know, that, that's one way of doing it. It kind of depends on, you know, what happens on the floor votes, but we are a bit constrained by what the state has now said a budget committee should be and what its duty should be.
I might also offer that if you are sort of gathering signatures, petitioning to be on the ballot, I think part of your campaigning in that regard would be, you know, trying to get a floor vote outcome that suits you.
Yeah.
Brent and then.
Yeah, Brent Bueller. Um, if, if they want the members to be elected, are you saying the term would be indefinite or it would be one year?
One year.
One year.
Be elected every year.
Same with the appointments. Okay.
Thank you.
Now Jan and then Vicky.
Jen Coolidge, one way you could get around that, having the floor vote and then not knowing if you're going to vote the next day is have that vote on a separate sheet of paper than on the regular ballot. So that way, if the floor vote is, yes, we want them elected, then you hand everybody that one, or for the mail-in ones, you toss it out if it's not needed. So that's an option too. That way you would still have one for the following year.
Yeah, we talked with Sue about that this morning. She has concerns about that being cost prohibitive, but it's, I mean, but it is. Yeah, these are all things that we can think about and kind of price out.
So the first budget committee, when it was formed, we met without the select board. It was just the budget committee, the town manager. And every now and then a select person would pop in and listen. We didn't get to talk to any department heads or get feedback that way. We could ask the manager, could you get more information? But we went through like, I think four, at least four separate meetings with just the town manager with the, the new budget that you were looking at. So then we made our recommendations and gave them to the select board. You accepted some, some you didn't, because you know what, you know, you have the whole picture. We're just, you know, learning. And then the next year, we made the recommendation that why go to all that, all those meetings? When then turn around, you're going to have all those meetings again. So it made more sense to hold them at the same time. You could still have the budget committee make recommendations on the side, or they could do them at that time, or you could tell us when you would want those recommendations for you. But I don't see the point of looking at last year's budget for the budget committee. You want to look at the current budget that you're working on because last year's information doesn't help you because everything changes in the next budget. So you would want to look at the, the budget to be voted on for the budget committee to look at.
And what I will note is when we were trying to research, trying to figure out when this whole budget committee thing first started, uh, Seth and Sue found in the town records from 1939.
1939.
1939. And at that point, uh, the vote was to have a taxpayer board that the select board was required to submit to them the budget 60 days before town meeting. And then they would then do something.
And, and wasn't, and wasn't, wasn't there also some motion? Wasn't there also mentioned in there that the town had just been kind of in 1939, just chucked in a budget out without any real great thought process? Maybe I'm, this is my interpretation and they were working in a deficit. And so along with the 1939 vote to do a, um, have a budget committee that was to also take out a loan to make up for where they had messed up getting into that point, you know, so.
And it, it was a significant amount of money. They borrowed, they voted to borrow $40,000 in 1939 to clear up past budget deficits.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I do think that there's such a benefit to having everyone together in the room, you know, if, if we're doing it at all and and I, as I say, I think having open meetings the way we do is pretty significant already. So.
And just so you know, that's, uh, just over $925,000 in this year, in 2025 money. So that's a.
Okay, thank you.
That would get us all fired.
Vicky, you had your hand up. You're happy to come up.
I just had a, so it's a two-step process. The town has to vote on it, but it sounds like the town already voted on it once.
In 1939, the vote wasn't to create a budget committee, but it was like a taxpayer committee of 10 people. And that fell by the wayside. And so the state law does have a carve out for towns that are currently electing a budget committee to allow them to continue that way. But I don't think a deciding in 1939 to elect a budget committee, but then letting that go by the wayside, I don't think we can rely on that as counting as what the town currently would elect to do.
Okay. So is this something the town will have to vote on every year at town meeting?
No, that, that, the, the, the vote to create a budget advisory committee and the vote to determine whether they're elected or appointed is a one-time thing. As long as we continue to follow it from then on.
I interpreted it that what they did in 2013 probably wiped out what happened in 1939. Because it also states now that you can only have five members where the 1939 thing was talking about 10 members and whatever. So it's, it's changed and it should be updated and.
Okay. I'm just wondering, like, say the town votes to have elected positions, but then you know, getting 30 signatures is a lot more discouraging than just filling out, you know, budget advisory application on the town website. So what if you find that people aren't quite that interested and it's not really working? Is there a way for the town to reevaluate it in future times?
I suppose we could always have a floor vote to say, is this working? Do we still want to do it?
Okay.
Okay. So that brings you up to date on what this is looked at realistically. And I don't know if the board would like to make a decision on which way they would like to go for this year.
Very confusing. I could see, you know, Barry's point. It's it's going to be a lot of, a lot of people that won't have, you know, a good idea what's going to happen.
Well, I think.
People voting early and everything and, you know, they'll get.
Can I, can I throw another wrench into the works just to be annoying? Is there a world in which the ballot for any new budget committee, assuming we vote to elect one, uh, could be punted to the November election?
2026 would be the.
There will be a November election this year. Yeah.
That would be 2026.
So, sorry. So we would have the floor vote.
You could have a floor vote in March of 2026 and you could have candidates elected in November of 2026 for that budget year.
So they would still be a little late for budget season, but at least we're not doing a whole special election and there's time for people to.
It'd be late for what we've been doing.
But the problem would then be, you know, the statute calls for them to be elected at annual meeting. So if we did a midterm election, they would need to stand for reelection at annual meeting right away. So that's another thing. But I think that the easiest answer is what to do right now for this budget cycle to comply with state law is we will not have a budget, to not have a budget advisory committee for this cycle. But as has been pointed out, all the, all the budget meetings are open to the voters and they can come and, you know, participate.
All of our budget workshops will be warned. All of our budget workshops will be worn on our normal platforms and in front page forum. And I know I would send a text to all the people that have been on our budget committee to remind them, you know, when we're doing it because I think that the the feedback is invaluable and having the more people and I I know Tim and I discussed this many times. I like the idea, you know, the five permanent members that came to all of the different meetings. And like last year, during town meeting, you sat up in the front of the room and could answer the question and it shows the public the people along with the board that put their minds to the job. Where just an open meeting kind of, you know, we can just say, well, we had an open meeting, but we can't really list everyone who came. So that's the one facet that I am disappointed with because I feel having the five people was very advantageous to helping us over the hump from what we had two years ago. When there was so much misinformation out there to last year, when there were 10 people telling them how accurately and forecast that we did. So, but I do think we need to get compliant with the law. I just think that that's.
And I think the overriding thing here is we're still going to do all of the budget process in public in open meetings with as much citizen input as we can get. None of that will change materially in doing this.
One more time, Vicky, and then I'm going to make a motion. Go ahead.
So it sounds like the first year, the budget committee would be on a ballot. But then the second year, they would be voted for at town meeting day, or would they be on the ballot again?
Again, just like someone who votes runs for a one year select board term, they run.
It'll be on the ballot.
It'll be on the ballot every year.
Well, assuming that's what the voters decide.
Right.
Yeah. So the the thing that dictates this in Brandon is there's three different categories of votes. There's candidates, financial matters like budgets and public questions. And in Brandon, we vote candidates and budgets on Australian ballots, but we vote vote public questions from the floor. Public questions lately have been limited to stuff like tax exemptions for the ambulance squad building, things like that. We don't have a lot of public questions because most of our stuff is done on Australian ballot in the form of candidates and budget questions and appropriations.
Thank you for.
Was that a motion you made Cecil?
I would, yeah, I was going to make a motion that as a first step, that we make a motion that we do not have a budget advisory committee for the year twenty twenty five. And then we still have more time that we can sort out whether we want to have the question at the floor or whatever. We've we've got time, but at least if we can let people know that we don't have it, what's matter? Did I say something wrong?
I just want to clarify, the budget committee would be meeting in twenty twenty five, but it would be the FY twenty seven budget, not even twenty six, twenty seven.
Means we're not appointing a committee now.
For this budget cycle.
That the people that have already, you know, sent their paperwork into you or called and said, I want to be on the committee would know that we want their input and we will let them know when the meetings are, but there's not an official committee.
I will second that.
Discussion on that.
All right, we've discussed enough already.
All in favor of the motion.
He did say disgusted.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And if anyone wants to make a motion now or not.
I.
As to whether we go to town meeting with questions or not.
Well, we'll.
We have to go.
If we if we want to have them. I mean, so I move that we at town meeting, March twenty twenty six, that we put to the floor vote whether the town should have an advisory budget committee.
Second.
Motion in a second to at town meeting, ask whether we should have an advisory committee. All in favor. Excellent.
I move that at town meeting in March twenty twenty six, we have a floor vote as to whether the budget advisory budget committee should be appointed by the select board. And I'll, the reason I'm phrasing it that way is because the default in the statute is that they are elected. The town can vote to have them appointed. And so I phrased it that way because that's what the question will be.
Second.
Motion in a second to have the select board appoint, as they said, advisory committee. If one is so voted in the question one, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Both? No one? That's where we start the margins. Okay.
I'm still awake.
Thank you all. That was, if you knew how many hours we spent trying to sort that out.
Well, and how many hours? I was like trying to find legislative history and looking things up and be like, because when I first came across it, I was like, oh, that's different.
And for those that are here that were on the budget committee last year, I promise that I will send you a notice of when when we start, when the meetings are, etc. They will be on off Monday nights from the regular select board, which would be the first and the third select board, which meetings probably starting in September? Mid September, probably, probably the second one in September. So, thank you all. Moving on, we do or get bogged down somewhere. A discussion on the ordinance review information. That is Cecil.
I have a visual aid. Okay. So I know there's been a little bit of confusion about what exactly I've been doing with this binder. And so I have completed my first kind of review of just the ordinance section of this, not the policies or procedures section. And what I've done is I've looked at each ordinance that is in here. And I've tried to determine like when it was enacted, whether the fact that it was enacted in nineteen ninety two in and of itself means that maybe we should be looking at it again. The very first one had a note on it that said recommended to be deleted February first, two thousand and five. And so my note is, did we delete it? The Act two fifty jurisdiction ordinance has been superseded because this is what made us a one acre town. We have since passed another one that made us a 10 acre town. So I don't think we even need to repeal it. It's been superseded. The alcoholic beverage control ordinance, my note just says, we need to figure out when it was actually adopted and just check to see that it's consistent with state law and determines like, you know, what we're allowed to do as opposed to what the liquor control commission does. The animal control ordinance, I have a post-it note saying we probably need to update it to address the new state statute regarding animals livestock running at large. We address dogs running at large, but in twenty twenty four, the state passed several humane statutes, but the one that I think we need to check on is livestock running at large. And so my note says, check that. We have a bicycle, wheel vehicle and motor scooter ordinance. There's some question as to whether that's been repealed or not. We're researching that. But anyway, I'm not going to go through each one, but that's basically, I just like put little post-it notes saying this is what we might need to look at. So there are some ordinances that are going to require if not significant reworking, at least significant review. And that is what we the next step would be to have a working group of select board members, a two member group, because if we have three, we have to have it as a public meeting. And that would, we have a, we have a rental housing code. It was adopted. It doesn't say when, oh, it was adopted in nineteen eighty three with some revisions in nineteen ninety nine and one amendment in two thousand and seven. It's possible that some of these things are no longer relevant. It's possible. One note I have on that is do we need to address the issue of short term rental rental, like Airbnb, Verbo and the rest on that? So that's one that would require a working group to look through.
And to be clear, the working groups would then present a recommendation to the select board as.
Present a recommendation to the select board. It would still have to be discussed at open meeting with public comment. And I will note, this is in legislation, I always joke about, you know, everyone loves sausage, really don't want to know how the sausage is made. Legislation is often, most legislators and well, Mr. Nielsen has left, but he would probably back me up on this. Most legislators legislators don't write, write their own legislation. It is brought to, it's either done by legislative council based on a suggestion or more often than not, it's a lobbyist has brought a completed act to the a legislator and said, well, you sponsor this and it goes through. And so the initial writing of it and review of it is just the beginning. And it comes to the select board and the select board is doing the heavy lifting of deciding, is this what we actually want it to say? And so it's a long process. And so we will probably just do like one at a time and it could take a while. But then once we are done, wordsmithing, stuff like that can take place. Once we have the substance and the structure, that's when we figure out how to organize it better and how to digitize it. So it's available to everyone. So they don't have to come look through this book. And this book is super confusing because we have several ordinances that they'll write a new one, but they'll leave the old one in there. And it's like, am I supposed to care about that one too? So, so our goal is to have it updated, make sure we're compliant with state law. Make sure that we are addressing all the issues that towns are allowed to address by ordinance and that it is in a aphasia brain. Okay, there's a word I'm looking for.
Format?
Format. Thank you. That is the word I'm looking for. Two points to Jeff. That is a format that is easily understandable and accessible to anyone in town that needs to look at it.
So today, when we were discussing this also, you had a very great little definition of the difference between a ordinance and a policy. Would you just state that for the public?
So the difference between an ordinance and a policy is that a policy is something that the select board passes for the staff or other boards to follow. But an ordinance is something that the select board passes that everybody in Brandon has to follow. So ordinances are outward facing and policies are inward facing and the ordinances are the ones that have the major public review built into the statute of, you know, being able to object to the select board's action.
And I would just note also that we can only enact ordinances that the state has told us we can, I mean, it's like the state has set out, these are the areas that municipalities can enact their ordinances about that. And sometimes it's like, I think alcohol is a good example, is the state regulates a lot of things about alcohol, but there's some carve outs that we can enact ordinances addressing open container use in town, alcohol on public property, things like that. And so we do have an ordinance that covers that, but every ordinance needs to be able to show the statutory authority that the town derived its authority to write that ordinance on. And that's another, we have some in here that I'm like, I wasn't sure what the statutory authority is. And so that's other questions I had. Vicky.
So it's my understanding that when you do bring the ordinances to the select board, that you have to provide a copy of what is there existing already. And then the proposed changes, like so people can compare them side by side.
If we're making amendments, what we would do is just like they do, if you ever look on the state legislature's websites for bills where they are making amendments to existing ordinances, what we would do is provide red line copies. And those red lines would show strike throughs of what's being deleted and underlines of what's being added. If we are simply repealing a ordinance in full, we would just provide, this is the like we did with the full hall ordinance. This is the ordinance that we are recommending repeal. And we wouldn't have, you know, something to compare it with. It would just be that.
Okay. And I have one follow up question, like when you're bringing, because you're going to do one at a time. Will the particular ordinance that you're addressing that evening be listed on the agenda item? And not just like a generic, so people, if they don't care about certain ordinances, they don't have to come.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And we may do more than one at a night. I mean, if one is just to repeal something and it's cut and dry, we might, you know, so that we can get through this process sooner. I would think we might do more than one. And I will tell you also that when the nights that we're going to be discussing a particular ordinance, we'll make sure we have copies that people can look at that don't go online.
Thank you.
I'll make that as a, my guarantee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I would like to propose that we name two people.
Did you have a follow up?
Yeah, I think.
Oh, no, just like if, so for the agenda again, like if you're repealing one, will that be listed separately than the one you're amending?
Yes, thank you.
So I'd like to propose that we have Jeff and Cecil work on this. I don't know that, I tell you, you just shook your head. The, and the reason I have chosen those two is that Brian and Ralph are pretty busy in their
Oh, you're owning their own business.
I also have my own business.
Well, Jeff is a way better wordsmith than I am. So he got that.
He did. He got two points.
He did it to himself. And then when they come forward, then it's my position as the board chair to kind of be the presenter of information and then we discuss it openly with the public and then we vote on it. And that's the way I would like to advance this. If you accept.
Fine by me.
Do we want to make it as a motion? That's what we do?
I don't think it needs to be a motion. But I just want to do, sorry, you just make me laugh. I just want to make sure everyone understands that this really is an open and above board process. And that, no, we're not trying to hide anything. We're just, you know, trying to make life easier for the people who need to follow ordinances. Or maybe didn't even know we had them or, you know, and just.
The book is severely outdated.
Oh, my goodness.
And there's no way that anyone would know what's there without going through all kinds of stuff. And we're going to get it all. What was the right word, Jeff?
Formatted.
Formatted.
Formatted in the computer for everyone to be able to find anything they want easily in one spot. And then we'll have to try to keep it up to date. It's a process that should have been done long ago.
I think maybe when we get to policies, we talk about saying every 10 years or whatever, the select board should conduct a review of ordinances.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to move on from that as we
Good.
Got through that. Item ten, public comments for things not on the agenda. Brent Buehler.
As Seth mentioned in his report, tomorrow night is the first meeting of the new board of trustees, and I would encourage the select board and you folks as the sewer commission to attend and start taking back control of the money surely far left to the town of Brandon. Thank you.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask for clarification on that because you said, so trustees of public funds are seven o'clock here. And then you sent, mentioned another group was going to be.
The working, the Brandon workbook working group of the historic preservation commission. So it has a quorum of the historic preservation commission on this working group. So it's being warned as a public meeting. The trustees of public funds are going to meet in this room at seven o'clock tomorrow using the select board's Zoom connection. If anybody wants remote access and the working group for the Brandon workbook is going to meet upstairs at the town office at six thirty using the planning commission's Zoom connection.
Wasn't the Mesquite District doing something tomorrow also?
The Mesquite District is Wednesday.
There are. There, okay.
Second Wednesday.
I thought at one point you had mentioned to me that they were gonna have to end up being out there or something, so.
No, no, they're they're meeting the.
All right, I was just making sure we had enough room.
Get all meet together and just like.
Yes, one last time. It's a public comment, so it's okay.
Is it typical for two groups, different groups to be meeting at the same time?
It's not typical. Um, I think the working group for the workbook. Wasn't, it's almost like an ad hoc committee, like it's not people who have worked together before. So they they did the best they could to come up with a date, and similarly, the trustees of public funds, this is the first time they're meeting together. They both. Coincidentally happened to land on the same date. I made them aware. Um, and my solution to suggest was rather than try to reschedule, you know, volunteers was to try to meet in two different locations.
Well, I'm just wondering for future times, because, you know, I'm on that working group, but I would really have liked to have come to the trustees' meeting.
It would be best.
So is there like a Google Calendar or something that? People can use so that that hopefully won't happen again?
This is Bill Moore. Um, so typically people have been really good about emailing us ahead of time, saying, is this date work for us versus just setting a date? Like when Sue, for instance, who li, who lives, who works right downstairs from me, she'll send an email and say, hey, DRB wants to meet this night. Is it open downstairs? And I'll say yes or no, because we have, we do have a Google Calendar that manages the downstairs space and the upstairs space. So I would suggest that the chairs of those committees, as they try to schedule those meetings, if it's not on a regular night. Like the select board is the second or fourth, we don't have to worry about scheduling that. You just know that on the second, fourth Mondays, there's gonna be select board meeting. But if it's a group that meets in a irregular sporadic manner, they should really email to see if it's open that night, and there's not any other things going on, so.
And this is also why we've encouraged all the town committees and commissions to set regular meetings. And then if they have to. And they can always have like a regular meeting. It's gonna be the third Thursday of every month. And then if it turns out that they have nothing to do, they can always cancel the meeting. If something comes up that they are required by a statutory deadline to act within a certain number of out time, they could always have a special meeting. Um, if it's an ad hoc committee, it's a little trickier because, you know, they may only have one or two meetings. So they're the ones that kind of need to see, kind of thread the needle as to what the other committees are doing, but we highly encourage every committee and commission. To have a set regular meeting.
Although I think, can you make your Google calendars like accessible online, so like when they're looking at dates? Maybe they could.
Absolutely. Yes.
To see what's available before, I mean, you know, in other groups I've been in, everybody in the group had access to the to the calendar.
Yeah, the technology is there. We can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Okay, ten-minute recess before an executive session. Thank you very much for coming, everyone. Call a meeting back from recess. Need a motion for executive session?
Uh, I move to go into the executive session, uh, for agenda item eleven for, uh, one VSA, sub three thirteen A three, to include town management. Second.
All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Both? No one? Who is it?
Nine oh six.
What?
Nine oh six.
Nine oh six out of executive session.
Executive session.
Hey, okay, all in favor, say aye.
A second.
Okay, and no action taken, and Brian Coolidge?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that one.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.